You can please do the roll call.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Here.
Mrs. Tunny?
Here.
Mrs. Oost?
Here.
Mr. Andreessen?
Hello.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Ms. Kowalski?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to communications in public? No public communications, okay, we'll move then on to MTA.
Good evening, everybody. The MTA would like to extend our sincere gratitude to many who showed us their appreciation during Teacher Appreciation Week. Teachers loved their treats and there was an endless supply this week. Lunch and snack carts were provided for us by the PTA. Sweet uplifting notes from our students that were sponsored by the Student Council flooded our mailboxes. Many of our district families sent us cards or gifts and we also received really cool Mokina 159 golf umbrellas from the district office, which will come in handy during the rainy days when we are coming in or leaving school. Michelle Matt, who heads the MTA Scholarship Committee, presented $500 scholarships to former Mokina 159 students who will soon be graduating from Lincoln Way Central. These students were required to submit applications and write essays to be considered for the scholarship. MTA members read through numerous essays and chose the following students: Emily Arduino, Jacob Fox, Tessa Street, and Sarah Podzal. Tonight, we have our eighth grade team, instructional coaches, and art staff here. Our art teacher, Carrie Dobohoff, is here tonight. She has brought many new products: self-portrait holograms, clay pinch pots, radio symmetry name design, opt-art shading, and one-point perspective with shapes. A lot different than when I was in arts in school. Some of the students' artwork was also entered into the Lincoln Way Art Show in November. Currently, students are making outdoor mosaics with chalk and masking tape. If you went to April Board meeting, you were able to hear the value our instructional coach staff brings to the grade-level teams. At that time, they had done a coaching cycle to assist first-grade teachers with improving their students' informational writing skills and saw remarkable progress with that skill. They are doing something similar at the junior high by assisting with rubric writing and analysis of argumentative writing. They support each school's school improvement goals through collaborating with professional development trainers, running their own professional development for staff, and providing implementation support to our teachers whenever a new initiative or curriculum has been introduced. They are members of our ELA committees, school leadership teams, MTSS committee, and have also met and collaborated with the Lincoln Way area coaches. Finally, the MTA would like to wish a happy retirement to our teachers Cheryl Bayland and Patty Novak. They both started and entered their careers here at Mokina 159 and each have over three decades with our district. We will miss you, we thank you for all you have done for our Mokina 159 family, and we know you will be smiling with coffee in hand when our buses pull out of the bus farm on August 16th. And now I'd like to introduce you to Craig Martinez, who's going to speak about the eighth grade team.
Aloha, we had a Hawaiian day today over at the eighth grade. I was supposed to get this to Heather earlier and I forgot, so now you're stuck listening to me. But I'll stick to the script so that we finish tonight, we'll be okay. First of all, thank you for giving us a moment to spotlight some of the things that have happened here in our eighth grade this past year. I was looking over some of our data and 30% of our students are in the top 20th percentile on the most recent FastBridge ELA. 34% of them are in the top 20th percentile in math FastBridge. 35% of our eighth graders qualified for honors English for high school. And 75% of our students didn't miss a single assignment, homework assignment, according to our workroom data. Every time that you miss an assignment, you have to spend your lunch with one of us to make it up. You don't get to escape it. When we looked at it over the quarters that we have the data on it, 75% of our kids in their core classes didn't miss an assignment. Think about that for a moment, how much work that is. We also just learned IARs looking promising too. But it's not just about academics, we've been thrilled to get back our kinderbuddies this year and pairing the eighth graders with kindergartners for our projects and friendships, which I'll point out. Mr. Bayland and Miss Frank were two key allies in making that work here this year. After visiting MES on all the early days throughout most of the year, the little ones came up to the junior high this month to see what the big school's like and take a tour of the building and see the lockers. We did sidewalk chalk and bubbles and temporary tattoos and the smiles and the hugs as they pass the friendship between a five-year-old and a 13-year-old is something else to see as they kind of, beginning of the year, struggle going, what is this going to be about? And then at the end, they don't want to leave, it's just fabulous. We also saw a partial return of our reality store this year. Sorry, we didn't have you over to broker people and get jobs this year, but that'll come. The goal of this activity is to get students to think about their futures and to make wise choices throughout their high school years, both in their academic choices but also the experiences they pick up in extracurriculars. So in our re-launch, we scaled it back and worked in-house, but we're laying the foundation to bring this program to become another highlight of our eighth grade year. This week has been just a flurry of eighth grade celebrations. Today was our annual picnic, which went off terrific. Tomorrow is Great America, where our kids are encouraged to wear their Class of 2023 t-shirts that the PTA has provided for them. And Friday, we have our eighth grade dance, and then there's something going on Sunday. It's hard to believe this year's flown by and this time this week, our kids will no longer be part of Mokina, but they will be Lincoln Way Central students. But we feel confident they're ready for those next steps. Thank you for trusting us with topping off the end of their Mokina Public Schools education. And then finally, as mentioned, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this was the last ride of our Patty Novak. After 33 years here in this district, we'll miss her and do our best to carry on her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from MCSA? MEF, PTA?
MEF?
MEF?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
So my name's Kevin, I'm vice president of MEF Mokina Education Foundation. I just want to say thank you, everyone, for an awesome year again. And I know it's a transitional year for us at MEF. Very difficult without some rules to follow, but I think hopefully we got through it pretty well and we look forward to continuing our relationship in the future. So it's been a very busy end of the year with some highlights real quick. I don't have anybody's names, but just for NJH alone, we gave away six winners of $75 for Springfield. We gave away five winners of $750 for Washington DC for the trip to help out with that. And we also gave away six winners for Lincoln Way Central scholarships of $500 this year. So that was very exciting to see all Mokina 159 district people and we love to continue that on and we appreciate you guys all helping out with that. So a few grants that we just recently approved, real quick. Decodable books for the kindergarten as well as an in-house visit by a reptile show, which I heard was a hit. People love reptiles, I don't know why, but you know, as long as everybody loves reptiles, it's okay. There was also approval for an assembly by Big Run Wolf Ranch, who is located here in Mokina. And it was a presentation of small animals and a skunk. The skunk is very important, you wouldn't think a skunk was important, but it went along with a book that is shared with an event. It's a book called A Boy Called Bat, I believe, right? So it was a One Book, One School special event where the main character was an autistic boy who develops a love for a baby skunk. I don't know how you do that, but I probably should read the book. So as a last reminder, real quick, school kits are available, they're on sale. First time we're ever doing this as MEF as a group. Every school who enters by a certain date, I think it's June 26th, I have it written down here, can be entered into winning a $250 Amazon gift card as part of the drawing, as long as you're entered in by a certain date. So hope you're that winner. Please order school kits, it's a fundraiser for Mokina Education Foundation and thank you very much for all your time.
PTA? Okay, Board of Education? Okay, well, on behalf of the board, I would like to congratulate as well. This is Novak and Ms. Bayland, I think 34 and 33 years, so 67 years together. It's quite a commitment to the district, so that's amazing. Even more amazing, I think they both started here when they were five, so that's even better, you know? You know, so that's good. Okay, so anything else on the board? Okay, we'll move on, presentations, Dr. Shaw with the amended budget.
In front of everybody, you should have a copy of the State Board of Education, the ISB budget. So this is what the actual State Board of Education budget looks like. We tried to put it in a little simpler format through Skyward, through our financial software. But that is in front of you and that's what actually gets submitted to the State Board of Education. So for our amended budget, the process follows the same process as a regular budget. For the amended budget, it's part of our practice. In order to say you have to do an amended budget, you have to be within over 10% by fund in any of the funds to have an amended budget by the school code. We don't have that, what we have, we have a pretty tight budget, but what we have is a practice where we actually go through the amended budget process in the spring. So myself and our district accounts payable AP accountant, we meet with all of the building principals, we meet with the department heads, and we go through the amended budget process just to tighten up expectations of here's what's left in your budget. If you've got money left in your budget, you need to spend it. If there's something that you need to purchase, let's take a look at what you have left in your budget and how we can rearrange to make sure that you have the resources and the process to order for what you need. So that's why we go through the amended budget process and also reporting out to the board on here's what our budget looks like when we get close to the end of the fiscal year. So that's why we go through the process. So when we take a look at our amended budget, we do have, there is an updated PowerPoint that'll be attached to Board Book, there are a couple, one of the what's in Board Book compared to what's on here. We did have the May 8 Finance Committee, which we didn't have, which was removed from this slide. So you can see our timeline was the Finance Committee. April was the Board Information item and timeline. And then we've got requests for the Board to approve the tentative amended budget today. And then in June, we would have the, it's actually June 21st is the Board meeting date, which would be the formal Board approval for the amended budget. And then following that, I submit the form that you see in front of you to the Regional Office of Education and the State Board. So we take a look at the original budget. So when we take a look at where we started the year, so this is the original budget that the Board would see in the fall, in June, July, August, you'll see the original budget with the final deadline being in September. So when we take a look at it, what we're looking at on the FAR column is the percentage of balance to annual expenditures. So the Board policy says we want to stay between 35 and 65% of fund balance to expenditures. So the goal is to get into the green. So when you see pink, it means it's a little low and yellow means it's a little high. You know, I'm also overseeing transportation, so I went with the street sign colors. So our goal is to stay in the green and in the bottom, the totals you can see is at 58%. And that's really the sweet spot where we want to be yellow. It's a little caution because you're kind of high and red means you're low. So in our O&amp;M referendum money, you see where that's a low number. The Board policy tells me as CSBO that we want to have that number at zero because the community has given us referendum money for warm, safe, and dry for projects for our school and the directive is spend the money, do the projects that need to be done. So that one is always going to be low and everything else, we try to get in there. Bond and interest because it's just some reasons why the number is high. When we paid off junior high in 2019, 2020, we had some fund balance left over because you usually stay within that sweet spot. And since we haven't, since our expenditures really went down from 1.8 million to 550,000, the fund balance number went up. Transportation Fund, we have been spending down in our transportation fund and next year, that number will be significantly less when we buy our buses next year. And then IMRF, so security, we levy for what we need in that fund. So it's usually just kind of a pass-through. Working Cash Fund is a high percentage, we don't have any expenditures and that's the district savings count. And in tort and life safety, we really don't have many expenditures in there, but we have a little bit of fund balance left over. So that's our original budget with the over-under at 2.5 million and 2 million of that is purposeful because we had some left over in our Fund 21 from last year. When we went through the amended budget, we still, our focus in the bottom right is to take a look at that number, which is 55%, which is right in the middle where we want it. We do see our over-under number went from a negative 2.5 to a negative 3.1. And again, the majority of that money is purposeful of spending out of the O&amp;M referendum money, which is $2.1 million of that. Then the rest of them are listed on the next slide, which is an aggregate of 618,000. So the revenues came down by 73,000. We did increase expenses by 544. The majority of it was in special expenses. We added a behavior analyst this year, our purchase services went up. It is an ebb and flow of students that come in and out of that department and we know that a student can cause that budget to fluctuate up to $100,000 at any point in time during the course of the year. Our tuition, our private facility and public facility, one increased, one decreased, so that was kind of a wash. And then our co-op tuition also increased depending on what we get from the co-op in their budget. We had a little bit of increase in the O&amp;M, again, some of that was co-op maintenance. We are dependent upon our budget when we get their budget. Summer helpers and then the referendum money, we did add some security software. We do know that we need, and I think we looked at the purpose and the point of that security software last month in the Finance Committee of it actually in action and when it detected somebody trying to get into our system. And then we purchased the pickup truck out of the transportation fund so we can also use that pickup truck that we use for transportation in our transportation. So those were the biggest impacts in the amended budget. This is where our money comes from, 84% from local, so we're very fortunate to be funded locally, 9% from the state, and about 7% federal money. Federal money will be decreasing next year as our ESTR funds fall off. And where do we spend our money? We spend our, we're people business, we spend most of our money on salaries, benefits, purchase services to also people. And the other objects is co-op tuition or bond payments, so that's also people. So that's where we spend our money. And of course, we spend a significant amount from the O&amp;M referendum money on capital outlay. Any questions for me?
Questions for Dr. Shaw? Okay, I know there were some earlier, but you answered them, so no further questions. Then we will move on to the School Improvement Plan update. Turned over to Dr. Cohen, you'll pick the order.
Okay, sounds good. We had two goals this year as a part of our school improvement plan. The first one has to do with collaborative teachers and building collective efficacy. We used our Five Essentials data to kind of give us a starting point. We, the baseline data said that 59% of our teachers had not, last year and the previous year, observed in another classroom. And so Five Essentials feels that that is an indicator of collaboration. So we gave it a good shot. Our goal was, as reported by an independent survey, 75% of MES-certified staff will observe in another teacher's classroom two times during the 22-23 school year. One team meeting per trimester will be designated as an observation opportunity and a schedule of observations would be provided to the teachers. So in reality, the team meetings actually occur during other grade levels lunch recess or wind times, which proved very hard for us to schedule, to give teachers a schedule and to release them. So the teachers took it upon themselves to schedule their own observations during times that worked best for them with other teachers. So we had 55% of our staff did an observation in another teacher's classroom one time through the school year. However, then for the second observation, what we decided to do was celebrate the learning that we've done with our Keys to Literacy training over the last two years. So Alexandria and I hosted a celebration of learning where teachers brought artifacts from their implementation of some of the things that we've learned during that training and teachers did essentially like a gallery walk and they, there's pictures to share also. So they were sharing how they used their training in the classroom with students and what the results were. We have some, you know, mixed emotions about, or mixed feelings about this goal. The intent was there, it was great, but we realize we are a highly collaborative staff already. We might not be in teachers' classrooms often, but our teachers are so fortunate that they are collaborating every single day for at least 30 minutes a day. We do have a very collaborative staff. They did enjoy going into each other's classrooms, but we want to make sure that when we do that in the future, that there is an intent behind that. This one was just to get them into a classroom and be comfortable being in another teacher's classroom, which I think that we met that objective. A lot more teachers have since told me that they've gone to observe other colleagues, which is great. So I think that's just another layer on our already collaborative teachers. So we want to make sure that what we're doing in the future is meaningful, purposeful, and tied to what we are doing, what our focus is, not one more thing just to check off because the Five Essentials says that's an indicator of a collaborative staff. I know we have a collaborative staff and our staff does too, but, so that's how we'll move forward with that goal. But some of the teacher responses we got, we had them fill out a survey afterwards. They included what their big takeaways were, which was really great. They did learn from each other. I think mostly they observed in each other's classrooms during our 95% foundational reading skills lessons. They wanted to see what other grade levels were doing so that they had an understanding for what is going to be expected of the students in the following grade and then what they're working on in the previous grade, considering this is our first year with 95%. So they had some really great takeaways. You can keep going through that, that'll be available. And then here is the, a couple of pictures of our celebration of learning. So they have artifacts and they're explaining to their colleagues exactly what that activity was, how they used it, and then, as I said earlier, what the results were with their students. This was a lot of fun and I hope to be able to continue to do this every year. Teachers really enjoyed this and of course, there was cake afterwards, so. It's not a celebration if you don't have cake, so it was fun. The next goal was targeted, we were targeting our reading fluency as our new foundational reading skills resource was implemented, 95%. The goal, the goal states by the FastBridge Spring Benchmark, each grade level will increase the number of students who meet or exceed the grade level benchmark by 10%. The action steps, each grade level will use curriculum-based assessments to determine small groups based on skills for Tier 2 instruction and we were implementing 95% with fidelity, both of those happened. So we use different subtests of FastBridge depending on the grade level. So kindergarten used the letter sound fluency subtest of early reading. First grade used the decodable word subtest of early reading. Second grade used curriculum-based measure for reading, which is a cold read, how fast, how fluently they can read. So that's rate and its accuracy, and the same for third grade. And all of the subtests were timed. Okay, Mark? So kindergarten and first grade did not meet the goal as it was designed. What we realized is that we have focused on focusing on the accuracy. The rate is what brought our, did it, kind of impacted our scores negatively. They weren't reading as quickly, but what we quickly noticed was that their accuracy improved tremendously. So what they did read was accurate. In fact, third grade had six students, so 95% accuracy is what we're going for, the goal. Only six students were less than 95% accurate in a grade level of 175 students. So while the fluency, how quickly they're reading, might not have been read, we are so proud of the accuracy that they were demonstrating, it was a lot to be proud of. So the same thing with first grade, 70% of the students were at or above benchmark for accuracy. It's a great place to be, 70% of your students, it is, we did not increase it by 10%, but I am very proud of kindergarten and first grade and where they were. Second grade maintained the same score from fall to spring, we used the curriculum-based measure. 69% of students met or exceeded the benchmark scores. The percentage of students who met or exceeded the benchmark for comprehension was 79%. So while they might not be reading quickly, they are definitely understanding what they are reading and that's because they can decode all of the words. So we're very, very proud of that. The fluency is not impacting their ability to understand what they're reading. Third grade, the same thing, the percentage of students who met or exceeded that benchmark for comprehension was actually 83%, super proud of that. And so they maintain that rate at 65%. So they didn't meet the benchmark as it was designed, but they've definitely shown progress over the years. Mark, if you could go to the next slide. Understanding that there are four stages of skill mastery. So acquisition of the skill, which is really where, what we focused on this year. We want to make sure that we're implementing 95% with fidelity. We are focusing on teaching, explicitly teaching foundational reading skills. So we focus on decoding and encoding, which is reading and spelling and writing. So we have skill acquisition, that's really where our school focused this year. The next stage is to be able to do that fluently as soon as, you know, you acquire that skill, now you can do it fluent, fluently. Then you generalize that skill to new readings, not just during reading time, but you're applying it across subjects or other reading materials and then adaptation becomes what you do with that, how are you generating new knowledge or new skills? So are you spelling, are you incorporating that into your, into your writing? So acquisition is really what we focused on this year and then we'll just continue to move down that hierarchy of skill acquisition. As a school, we focused on that and, you know, another one of our takeaways is maybe FastBridge is not the best tool to measure what we were hoping to measure. That accuracy or that timed component really had that, that impact that looked like we didn't make progress, but when we dug deeper into the data and really kind of dissected it, our students are making tremendous progress. So we're very, very proud of them and very proud of the teachers who are implementing it. That's it? Any questions for me? No?
Intrigued by the whole investigation of FastBridge and the rate at which someone, a child reads. That's been an issue as far as, as long as I have known it, especially with my kids. And have you seen that trend in previous years or is this a year where you're seeing this for the first time? That the timing was bringing the scores down, was this investigated?
You know, not to the level. You know, not to the level, honestly, that we did this year, just because we're so focused on, you know, when you look at that, when you look at those scores and you're like, what, what happened? And then you just kind of dive deeper into it and investigate it. This year, we really, really investigated it. It's where we are and kind of like our focus and it's the intention behind it also. We're implementing a new resource. We want to know how effective it is. And it's effective in learning those foundational reading skills. So no to your question, we have not done a deep dive before. We haven't really, I can't say since I've been here, we've really looked further and investigated. But I think because as a building, we're going through this learning process together. So we know more as a staff and we know better what to look for, if that makes any sense.
Yes, it does make sense. And, and I'm sorry if you said this and I may have missed it, but what are the alternatives on to FastBridge that seems to rely a lot on timing?
So alternatives would be something untimed. So when you read this whole passage, however long it takes you to read it, what, how much are you, how accurate are you? So you would just untine it. You could, you could do the same thing. FastBridge is timed. What can you read in a minute? How fast, how quickly, how fluently and how accurately can you read in a minute? You know, if we really wanted to know how accurate students were, we would take that time component away. And we would also take it a step further, which actually I did when I looked at the comprehension piece, which is for second and third grade A reading. So is their rate having a negative effect on what they're understanding when they read? And it's not having a negative, negative effect on what they're reading. Fluency is important because that means they're just going to be able to read more and understand more and read for longer periods of time. And it is something that we will continue to work on, but it's, I'm happy to see that our students are understanding what they are reading. That's the most important part. Yeah, you have to be able to read it and then you have to be able to understand what you're reading. So, yeah, thank you. All right.
Questions? No? And Mr. McTeague?
Alrighty. I think Dr. Cohen, when I was editing this, a couple of slides got jumbled. So if you could go to the next slide. This is kind of the introduction to our first goal. Our first goal was our cultural goal. And we consider ourselves, we call ourselves an MIS family. You know, we're small enough, we get to know everybody. So we wanted something that was going to help enhance the feeling of, of the family at MIS. So we looked at collective responsibility. You know, that was, it comes from the Five Essentials survey as well. Our scores were good. We had, you know, majority of our scores were at most. We wanted to move to the next level, which was nearly all. So we really took a look at this collective responsibility. There's a lot of words on this slide, so I apologize for that. But the gist is we want our students to experience the freedom and the independence to figure out who they are. We want them to know their learning styles. We want them to be able to succeed academically, emotionally, socially. And the way that we can do that is by getting our entire staff, getting their eyes on these students. So what we focused on was providing the opportunities for these students to interact not only with their core teachers, but with teachers across the grade level as well as teachers from both grade levels. So we provided those, those opportunities. Now, this is how we got there. We provided observations. This is year two of our colleague observations. Staff members get into same content areas, they get into opposite, you know, different content areas. They go cross-grade levels. So there's lots of opportunities for staff to get into other classrooms. You know, and this provides a great opportunity for collaboration. After the observations, they talk about what they saw, some of the great things they took away from and so forth. The students then become familiar with other students. They also become familiar with other staff members. So again, getting more eyes on the students, trying to figure out who this child is, you know, as a whole child, not as just in Mrs. Culture's class or Mrs. Sports' class. This is the whole child and we're looking at how we can help them out. This year, each certified staff member was able to get into six different classrooms. Last year it was four or five, so this year, you know, the teachers were able to figure it out and they schedule their own. I give them, you know, each month they do a difference, you know, same content, same grade level, different content, different grade level. And the teachers take it, they run with it and really some great conversations come out of that. Moving on, so relationships, you know, we're asking the teachers to create those relationships. We want them to really get to know the students. And, you know, as a result of working on this goal, our individual student assessment, which we call our ISA, our problem-solving teams, they have increased. Now, you might think, well, that might not be a good thing. However, the way that we look at it is that we have more eyes on these students. We have more input on who these students are and we can see their challenges from different perspectives. So through the collaboration, through the common, you know, discussions, we can help these students quicker and we get, you know, a whole different viewpoint of who this child is. Student-staff recognition, you know, walking through the halls, walking through the cafeteria. We have all kinds of fourth grade students yelling out to Mr. Roberts. We have fourth grade students hanging out with fifth grade students after school. So there's a whole different feel of our culture in the building. And, you know, some empirical data, our leadership team took a survey in the fall. One of the areas, all, the majority of the scores came back positive. The one that we truly wanted to focus on was that everybody in the building understood our goals. You know, we've always talked about it, we've always presented it at the beginning of the year, but we truly drove it home this year. We all knew that we wanted to take responsibility for our kids. So those scores increased from the spring, from the fall to the spring. Just a couple of pictures. I love pictures. This is just some activities. I know you guys don't know the kids, but there's fourth and fifth, you know, mixed in the tables. Mrs. Baylen is actually in one of those pictures, you know, we're, we're sorry that she's going, but wish her the best of luck. So they're just doing activities. When we do cross-grade level activities, it's mostly for the social interactions. They get to know each other, they get to interact. You know, the fifth graders are the leaders. So they're, you know, they're helping the fourth graders, you know, learn some of those social cues and, you know, how to get along in groups and so forth. So just a couple of good pictures of things that are happening in the building. Our second goal, we focused on writing. We took a little bit of different approach to this this year. We don't have all the empirical data that we probably could have collected. We were looking at it more as professional learning this year. You know, the I, our IAR scores were not where we wanted to be clearly last year. So we really wanted to focus on it, but we wanted our staff to have a common base of knowledge, a common base of information. And that was our goal this year. We had lots of professional development. Our goal is, is there on that third bullet point. We wanted writing in all content areas. And I'm happy to say, I can say for math and ELA, most days in science and social studies, the kids are writing. You know, math and ELA, for sure, every day, they're writing something, whether it's a shorter piece, whether it's a quick write, which I'll explain in just a minute, they're writing and they're writing in PE. You know, it's, that's a whole different level when, you know, Mr. Boss and Mr. Reeves ask them to write something, you know, when they're supposed to be running around the gym. But it's what we want, you know, it's our focus, so the kids are, they do it. Correctly sometimes, but they, they do get a chance to write in PE. And again, our action steps, we looked at the Common Core state standards. We used the backwards design to create writing, model writing experiences, examples. So our teachers looked at that, they figured out what would look, you know, what the writing piece should look like, and then they helped the children get to that point, they helped the students get to that point. Our ELA teams created rubrics last year. As we worked through the process this year, our math teams are creating rubrics. Didn't get a whole lot of help from the state as far as math rubrics go. There's not a whole lot out there. But one of, some of our teachers in SourceScreen, one of them, are helping to create some rubrics for math so that we can, you know, we start evaluating the math writing pieces, you know, we're all looking for the same thing. Professional learning, you know, this is what we went through this year. Now, these are things that teachers have already done. You know, these are good, solid practices. The difference is this year with our, our PD that came into the building, now we all, twenty-seven of us, have a common understanding, common terminology. These are just some of the things that we went through. Again, no great revelations as far as strategies go. It's just we're all looking at it from the same lens now. We're all looking at it from the same, you know, the same terminology, the same understanding everything. So we're, you know, we've got a good, solid baseline across the board. Some of the things that we did, writing beliefs were created by our homes. I have an example up there. We wanted to know what the kids thought about writing. So every ELA homeroom or every ELA class asked the kids, you know, how do you feel about writing? What are your beliefs? And, you know, this is just one example. You know, writing matters. You know, some of the biggest ones up there, writing is hard. Writing is tough. So be patient, you know, don't rush through it, take your time. You know, it's just some good examples. And again, this is, this is student-driven work. So we have posters up in all of our classrooms. Common terminology, you know, the race, what we have up there. You know, restate the question, answer the question, cite the evidence and then explain what it means. That's how we look at it. One of the cool things is, and Craig is here, we had him over at the beginning of the year with Mr. Munch and someone else came over, but I don't remember who it was now. Oh, sorry. Stacy came too. So Stacy, Stacy was there and she was one of the most important ones, you know. Sorry, Stacy. So we talked to them, you know, how would race transition to the junior high? And because they use CER, we use race. And from kind of what we came up with is that it's a good transition. You know, if all of our students know race, which they do now, it would be an easy transition once they get to sixth grade and they can work with that. So, you know, lots of collaboration. We came up with common graphic organizers, you know, and it sounds, you know, not as important, but when all of the students are looking at information and taking down notes in the same way, we can have some great conversations. You know, two-column notes or webs or whatever it might be, we're all using those common graphic organizers. We have more consistent grade level collaboration. Our ELA teams, math teams have a dedicated day, you know, one day a week. And on their agendas, their standing agendas, writing is always part of that. So we have lots of collaboration specifically aimed at writing and more consistent vertical articulation. I believe every, almost every half-day, maybe all of them, that fourth and fifth were able to get together. You know, the, the math team got together, the ELA team got together and just discussed, you know, what's working, what's not working, suggestions, you know, just a great time to collaborate. Now we just have a couple of examples. I know you can't read it, I'm not asking you to read it, but this is a fourth grade example. It's an opinion piece. So the one on the left for Thailand was something that was done in the fall. Shorts, simple, it had everything it was supposed to have. And then you look at the piece on the right about cell phones and it's much more, they have much more descriptive words, they have elaboration, they're citing text. Instead of just saying on this page, they're actually citing a paragraph where it came from. So there was a lot of growth, you know, good examples of growth. The next couple of slides, same thing, just some good examples. You know, there's some typos in there, but that's okay. So the top one is an example from the fall. The, the one on the bottom right is an example from just this past month. So again, much more descriptive, you know, the vocabulary grabs your attention. You know, this teacher specifically worked on introductions. So you can see the two introductions. It's just a much better piece. So again, we don't have all the empirical data, but we have the anecdotal where we can see the students growing. You know, we can see how they progressed from the fall to the spring. And then I believe I just have one more example. And this one is even more telling. You know, from the fall to the spring, just the amount of writing. You know, the, the kids don't always enjoy writing, but now they're doing it and they're doing it well. You know, we know we still have a ways to go. We know we still have, you know, our, our path. You know, we've already got our, our goal for next year. We want to work on more productive feedback. We want to work on getting those rubrics implemented and common grading practices, but we've made some very good progress throughout this school year. Quick writes, I mentioned quick writes earlier, just a quick, two minutes, nine, two minutes, thirty seconds of what a quick write is. It's just a, a brief opportunity for students to write. And this is done daily in all of our classes. So write the steps to complete something, a math problem. Three minutes lists as many facts as you can think about, something in science, something in social studies. We also incorporate some of the SCL components. Write an email to a classmate, complimenting them what they shared during class discussion. Three to four sentences explaining your emotional reaction to a picture, a song, the weather, whatever it might be. So lots of opportunities for the kids to grow academically as well as emotionally. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Well, you know, I'm going to have. Yumi has questions and comments. And always forget the microphone. First, I, I like the, you know, sometimes it's those softer things that go the, a long way, like the family feel and the cross-grade integration. And I wanted to say this earlier and I apologize, I did, with bringing, bringing that to eighth grade bodies, that makes an impact. One of my boys still has a picture. He's going into sixth grade, he still has a picture from that. But that really means a lot, so thank you for raising that. The, the three minutes to do something, I don't know, write as many topics. How does, how does that work in with kids that may have accommodations or, or kids that, you know, freeze when there's three minutes to list everything? Do they have the same kind of things, speech to, to talk?
They do. They can absolutely do it that way. One thing that we're incorporating in a couple of classrooms this year is they have a writing journal. So it's just like a binder or a notebook where they open it up and they write, that's where they write every day. A quick write doesn't have to be words, sentences, paragraphs. It could be a bulleted list. It could be a picture. So for the students who do struggle with writing, they have lots of other options to get their points across. You're welcome. Thank you.
For what I guess, you're up.
Hi. Very seldom do I look forward to giving a presentation, ever, but I am looking forward to this one. It's fun. So we've been on a three-year goal. We're in year two of our three-year goal. We realized a couple of years ago, for a while now, our writing scores were not very good, not very good at all. And we looked at it as a staff and we decided that we needed to address this. So we started, you've heard me, well, new people, not so much, but I've presented to the board repeatedly about CER, claim evidence reasoning. So the first year, we studied it, what would it look like, how we experimented a little bit. This year, we decided, you know, we were going to try to implement rubrics throughout the year, set expectations and try to, and instruct the students on CER. So, and, and this is done in every subject area, every subject area, especially in the, in the academics. But everybody talks about CER, it's the language of the building now. So we decided we were going to collect data four times a year and kind of have that benchmarking throughout the year to see where we're going. This was kind of our process. So this was our, our, these are our action steps. So thank you to Dr. Johnson and to Stacy. Stacy helped make the, the posters and Dr. Johnson found a nice bender. So every classroom in the junior high has a CER poster that's specific to that subject area. ELA has a different one and even in ELA, the eighth grade one looks different than the sixth grade one, but it all is CER language, science, math. And yes, we make the math people write. Glad to hear that's at MIS as well. We have it for PE and, and art and music as well. They don't write as much in there, but they talk about that thought process. That, oh, not quite yet. Yeah, it's all right. And mine's really small here. My eye, what's going on here? So all staff teach, they, they taught on the lessons. They taught the students what we expected, what's this going to look like? And then it's repeated throughout the year. You can see that one, it's got a checkmark, but it does kind of ongoing. And the next one, it's incorporating CER into all of our lessons. So again, it's that thought process if it's not the writing process. We know that's not the only writing process. There are more. There's narrative and informational, you know, persuasive, but this is really an argument writing format and we wanted to start with one and get this. to start with one and get this down really well. Like it says, exploratory in PE, also incorporated, all contact staff, they gave a baseline assessment, that's the first one we're going to show you here in just a minute. And then we do a, it said a second, third, and we added a fourth benchmark to see how we're going to be doing. Our goal this year was to try to get the, and to get our expectations set right. So when I show you the data, I'll explain, well, I'll tell you now, it's not comparing oranges and oranges, it's kind of like tangerines and oranges, same family, slightly different, citrus fruit, okay? So if you want to go, go ahead and go to the next one. All right, so this is our September data, and so that's our first benchmark. So what we're looking for is we want everything to be either orange or green. Green is the best, that means that they mastered the skill. Orange means that it's developing, they have it at an adequate level, but it's not quite mastery yet. Red means that they don't have it at all, and purple means they didn't take it. So we had some, some purple in there. If you look across the first call, the first pie chart, upper left, that is our claim, so how well they did on claim. Going over to evidence is the second one, and the third one is reasoning. So if you can see from September to May, it's dramatically different. You can see that the green has increased dramatically for claim, and this is sixth grade, we're looking at sixth grade right now. There was almost no green in September, now it's, it's over half of the, of the pie chart, and the orange takes up almost all the rest, and we have a sliver of red under evidence, not quite as much, but still, everybody is in the adequate area with green mastery. You can see the difference between the first one with that sliver of green, and now it's, it's about a third, a little over a third of the, the pie chart. And then with reasoning, which is the hardest of the skills, is the reasoning, then you see there was no green whatsoever, and now it is only about a quarter red. So that's really, really good. So we want to go ahead and go to seven. You can see similar things going on here in seventh grade. You can just look, it, it's a nice visual to see. September, almost nobody had that mastered, and now we're looking with almost three-quarters of, of that with claim. Reasoning, it's a little over half, and we have not quite a quarter of mastery there on, on reasoning. Again, that's, that's again the hardest skill to try to, try to work with. And then one more. So here's eighth grade, same story, okay? It's a nice, it, it, it's a nice picture of where we were and where we ended up at the end of the year. So, I mean, I really commend the staff for sticking with this and really doing a great job of instructing. One of the, on eighth grade, you can see that the, the reasoning, it grew probably the most. So fantastic on that with the, with the, I want to say the ELA teachers, but it's not, it's all the teachers, all the teachers doing this all the time in all their classes, even if they're just talking about that. And, and again, we want to engrain it as a thought process, that when you, whenever you do something, you make a claim. We made a claim that this was going to make a difference. Here's our evidence, okay? So that's what we want people, our students to do when they're going through and think logically on pretty much everything. I can't just make a wild claim. This isn't TikTok, you know, this is the real world. So, you know, we are, we have to make a claim and back it up. This next slide will show you just that, we just, it's another illustration numbers-wise to show you that everything grew. Everything grew as we went across. All right, so pretty fantastic goal. Our second goal was more of a cultural goal. We took, we took a survey a couple of years ago, that Association for Middle Education determined our strengths and challenges. We combined that with some of the five, or our Five Essentials survey stuff, and so we went through a professional development last year, and this year we've tried to implement some things. So we kind of nailed it down to focusing on four things, focusing on the team, our content team meetings, curriculum mapping and transitions. So a middle school means strong teams. We have, we have a couple of, well, we had a few people here, they, they disappeared. So our teams are super strong. We're middle school, that focuses on the team. We don't, we don't forget about the, the departments, departments are still important, but it's a grade-level team made up of different subject areas at that grade level. They meet on a daily basis to collaborate on student needs. They plan experiences for the kids. You heard about Kinder Buddies here. We have different field trips, we had the Career Days and Reality Store. It's the, you know, iFly, we, they, giving them those experiences, those a lot of times are the things that kids remember. We're working with transitions a little bit, but I had my team, I said, um, fifth grade's coming over, you figure it out. What do you need to tell them? And they worked on it and they figured it out. It also allows us to work closely with parents and caregivers. So a lot, a lot, we, knock on wood, really with two days left with eighth graders, I really need to knock on wood, we have almost no discipline. I mean, our discipline numbers are ridiculously low. We deal with things, but I deal with things when they can't. So when the team, they see something, something going sideways, they take care of it. And then if they can't, or if they, if something acute problem, they get on us, and, and we, we step in and support them. So the team is king. It also allows, we have strong communication in the school. I go in every week to the team meetings and I meet with them, we have conversations back and forth. You know, we, we do a lot of stuff. Lincoln Way comes over and I, it was not last year, maybe year, well, some recently, and they sat in this in the eighth-grade team, they disagreed with me on something and they shared it with me, and I said, okay, you know what, I listened, you're right, let's change it. And they were amazed that we would have that kind of conversation and, but we work together. We're, it's, it's, we're all equals. All right, go. Something new, in Five Essentials, there was a, we got, the situation was damn hard for, they were, they said we really didn't know what was going on in their class. So guess what? We now know. We, we met with them on a monthly basis, we, and that by, so Craig and Pat are content partners. So I would meet with them and a specialized teacher just to talk about eighth-grade ELA, and I would meet with the math team that way, history, science. And we would sit together and we would talk about what they're doing in their classes, what their expectations are. We talked a lot about CER. It was a lot of communication that went two ways, where I could have, or Luke, Luke and Stacy was in a lot of those meetings, Dr. Johnson was in a few, where we could have that two-way conversation with teachers about instruction and what they're doing in their classes. And I, I credit that also to some of the slides you're going to see a little bit later. And it was, it's, it's a great way for us to understand one another. So that's those content team meetings. Curriculum mapping, this has kind of got, got pushed in later on as part of our goals with Dr. Johnson, working with all of our, all, everybody at the junior high is working on accurate curriculum maps. That just gives us a better map, a better structure for what we're doing, and then they'll all be consistent. We're about, I'm going to go with 98% done, we just need to do some editing, some final editing, and that'll be something that we can share with the public. We can say, this is what we teach and when we teach it, a little bit about how we teach it, it's, it's a nice, it's going to be a nice working framework. And then we'll have other things that we do in the background, you know, that, that attach to say how we do these lessons and that stuff, but it gives us a nice framework that we can share. It also gives me as a principal and as administrators, something that we can talk with teachers about and say, hey, it looks like on your map you're supposed to be here. Are you there? And we can have that conversation back and forth, and, and are we consistently assessing those things? All right, next one. And then the last one we had was transition. So we do work very closely with Lincoln Way, we want to keep fostering that, that conversation. We have the Link Crew, if you are familiar with the high school, they have high school students, sophomores, juniors, and seniors who come over and they talk to our kids. A lot of times it's former Mokena kids who come over and talk to our kids about various different things. We, all of our students are required to have a 504 plan or a special education transition meeting with the high school. We have them come over and talk to the students, Lincoln Way kids and counselors prior to them registering for classes in late January. And then the Link Crew just came back, they came at late, at the very end of April to meet with the kids again. Do you have any questions or concerns? So we what, we do a nice job on that end. We're trying to do more to work with MIS now, that's our, our next thing. We have the Step Up Dance, I don't know if any, if you want to see a wild time, you go to a, you go to, you go to the Step Up Dance, those fifth graders, ooh, boy. So that's where we only allow six, our fifth, sixth, and seventh graders to come to transition up, to have their first junior high experience. We're having, on May 22nd, we're having the fifth grade come over to, to a tour of the junior high and meets the, the, the teachers over at the junior high. It's, it's going to be, it's pretty informal, it's just giving them a chance to walk around, and then always, so we, we do the same thing now with fifth grade, where we, we go down and, and go to their special ed and 504 meetings, so those kids can transition easily up into the junior high. And then the last thing on there, we started last year, and I, I really like it, is we realized that a lot of our kids don't see the graduation ceremony until they're in it. So what we decided was as part of our practice, so this will be on Friday, we bring in the sixth graders and seventh graders, and if you don't know, this is, it's just a symbolic thing. So in the West Gym is where everybody congregates in the morning. So the sixth graders are on one corner of the bleachers on one side, seventh grade, so they share a side, eighth grade has their own side, because they're big kids, right? And then, so with this assembly, we moved the seventh graders over to the eighth-grade side, because they're now eighth graders, and the sixth graders get to spread out on their, on the seventh-grade side, and then the eighth grader's on the floor. So we talk about promoting, that your expectation is that you promote it to the next grade. So I'll be telling them, you know, eighth graders, you're not, when you walk out of here, you're a ninth grader. Seventh graders, you're eighth grader now, you're the big kids in the school. Sixth graders, you get to prepare to be in the middle and to welcome in the, the fifth graders when they come over. So that's our transitions, and I think that's all I have.
So everything you just heard, nobody mentioned teaching to a test, right? We're teaching skills, we're teaching writing skills, we're teaching reading skills, decoding skills, and if you do an effective job of having a high-quality curriculum and teaching skills aligned to standards, the test will take care of itself. Shockingly, the state of Illinois has provided IAR data to us probably earlier than ever. And so, and there is something to be celebrated here, all the progress that's been made to all of our buildings and discussion around, around our performance. I'm starting, let's start with math. All three of our buildings had a goal around literacy, whether it was writing or reading. All of the focus was on literacy. However, the better students are at interpreting arguments, the better they are at writing written responses for the someone's open responses, open response questions on the math portion of the test, the better they will do. Last year, we, we tied our highest performance pre-pandemic for math performance on the IAR, and this year we continue to grow and cross the 50%, meet exceeds threshold to 51% across the district, our highest score ever. Read the Tribune this October, and they'll still be talking about learning loss from the pandemic, and we have gone to another level. Again, highest performance in math we've ever had, and we continue to grow. ELA so far, again, this is preliminary data, there will be some adjustments, and we don't have statewide data, we don't have it broken down by demographics, we don't have it broken down by subclaim. Subclaim are the, the pieces, the standards within ELA or the standards within math that break out what the students did well, what the students may have to work on inside of those tests. I guess, too late now. Oh, I went backwards. So the, for the ELA portion, we had our best performance just before COVID, 49.3% met or exceeded. We stayed pretty consistent in the low 40s post-COVID. Again, as Dr. Royce pointed out, when we sat down in the fall of 2021 and looked at our subclaim data, writing was really where we suffered, because students weren't producing the work. 54% of our students met or exceeded state standards on this particular assessment, a 13% increase in the highest performance ever in Mokena. Again, coming out of the pandemic, it's just been, you know, I'm not sure if this is the right, just a ruthless focus on a standard with, with, and, you know, finding a weakness and just teaching the heck out of it, implementing with fidelity, and, and you see the growth. I want to point out the junior high's performance on the IAR for a moment, because they probably got, they got, they started on their writing goal a year before MIS did. So they're, they are a little bit ahead of the game in terms of designing the rubric and coming up with the assessment to measure what it is that they were looking at. I will also say that they had, by doing four data collections, they had three rounds of feedback. So collect, you know, giving them an assessment, grading that assessment, giving it back to them with feedback on the rubric. Previous two years there, ELA performance was not all that dissimilar overall from meets exceeds percentages from the rest of the school district. This year, 65% of the students in Mokena Junior High met or exceeded state standards on ELA. If you were to take this data point and plop it into last year's data set from across the state, this would put Mokena Junior High in the top 5% of all schools across the state, along with Deerfield, Hinsdale, Libertyville, et cetera. Very, very proud of the work that they did here. To give you an idea, so this, the 22% growth, this is unbelievable. To give you an idea of where the students were last year, again, this was, you know, now seventh, eighth grade is not on here. Last year's eighth graders, of course, aren't in our system anymore, they're freshmen at Lincoln Way this year. 65% of the students last year in eighth grade met or exceeded state standards. They had a, they did a really nice job. Fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, not nearly there, but now those students last year, the same group of kids to this year, 25 to 61%, 23 to 59%, 38 to 76%. So the percentage of students that met or exceeded state standards increased by 36%, 36% and 38% at each grade level respectively, doubling the amount of students that met state standards in one year with the same group of kids. So I just want to give kudos to junior high staff. When everybody pulls together and focuses, this is the kind of work that you can do. And so it's just, it's just a tremendous success story, can't compliment their professionalism and their work enough. Are there any questions?
Questions and statements. So going back to the school improvement plans, is this an annual thing that you guys do? Is this something that, is this the first year or is it just a normal part?
Well, I guess I'll answer. So we've, we've done school improvement plans for years, but we formalized the process last year, really, or two years ago now, using the, the way that we do it now, where we come up with a couple of goals, and we all try to focus on one academic goal and one cultural goal, because we, you know, any more than two goals and you just can't tackle it. As you can see, all of us have four or five subcomponents to these goals. So yeah, it's a, it's a good process. We meet with the district office people to talk about what our goals ought to be and to tweak it a little bit and what kind of ways that they can support it as well.
I mean, I just, I really love them. I enjoyed reading them, I enjoyed the updates even more than I enjoyed the plans. I can appreciate that they, the goals are well-defined. The, the, you know, the measure of success, I think, is well-defined, and, and so that's really great. So my next question is, when, would this happen over the summer then, and then for, for next year, or at what point does it happen for the next school year? I have more to say on that, on what you just said too.
Sure. So we start, we'll start the process again in August, once we have our IAR data and our Five Essentials data. And can I, it's, the process itself is sort of rinse and repeat. Now, we do have some goals that are multi-year goals. Junior High's not going to drop the writing, in fact, they're going to take that argument of writing and maybe go into other, other types of writing. Again, we want to make sure we finish the process. It just goes a little different, and we'll look at that subclaim data, make that determination. We'll present those to the board in September, do an update in December and January as we did this year. I think we, do we update in January or February? I think we wait until after February, we had, we had it till after we had the winter fast bridge, and then wrap up in May. And this is just a, you know, nobody's making us do this, it's not a state accountability system, this is just us informing the board and informing our community about what it is that we're doing to improve. So, you know, we, we were going to continue to incorporate this process, and each building takes it, just does it a little differently based on what they need.
I think, I think they're great. So, Dr. Rolanditis, I can, really, I just want to commend you on a, on a number of things. One is obviously what you're doing for the, for the reading and what you've done this past year. I mean, the proof is there, it's there, and it's tremendous for a one-year period of time. I mean, I just can't even fathom how. So I'm assuming at some point, like maybe over the, over the summer, then we can take what they have done at the junior high and incorporate maybe some of those elements in the reading plan for the other two schools, which I'm sure you guys are already planning on that, but, yeah, that, I- But, um, yeah, that, IAR data, the preliminary data, I'm just very impressed and very proud of everything you guys have done. It's tremendous.
Just quickly, say something, were you going to say something like?
No, I'm turning my microphone off.
Off, okay. I'm in the process of going back on. So as a parent of Mokina District 159, I have a daughter graduating high school now, right? Starting back when she was starting school, I had a friend who wanted me to homeschool because she was homeschooling. And I knew as a mom, I'm like, no way, am I disciplined enough to do a homeschooling program? No way. So here they come into Mokina, and my daughter is graduating high honors, and I, I really truly believe it starts at the elementary level. And my son is a high honor role student, he's a sophomore. And Mokina has led them in that direction because we have such incredible teachers here. I have loved my kids' days here so much, and the teachers, the staff that have guided my children, Mrs. Sullivan back there helping Ava with her, her speech. Just every aspect of this district, from our teachers to, to our administration and our staffing everywhere have been so superb. And I commend everybody for the hard work that they put into our students. And I'm really grateful to all of you for all your hard work, because I know, me, I could never do it. So I thank you truly from the bottom of my heart. That's it.
Hey, we will move then on to information reports. Dr. Cohen, you're back up. I'll try and keep this brief. First, I want to thank Cheryl Baylin and Patty Novak for their years of service. I know Patty left. We had a retirement event for them, and we'll recognize them again in front of the entire staff next Friday. But they're both of them just wonderful teachers, and gave their entire working career to our district, and we're very grateful. Want to recognize our four Galaxy Award winners, now that they are out in the open and public. Congratulations to Victoria Clifford, the music teacher here at Mokina Elementary School, for all of her work with all of our different bands. She takes on so many ensembles, two concerts two weeks ago, concert this past Monday, you know, before school, two ensembles, after school, two ensembles. I mean, she's, and so she was nominated by a parent, we're very grateful. Kathy Arduino, teacher, first grade teacher here at Mokina Elementary School, the work she does for the veterans on her flight, the Manteno Veterans Home. Her work, you know, mentoring multiple teachers here and over her years in the district, and then especially the way she handled a very difficult situation this year when Eddie Smirzenski passed away, being a rock in support for her students as well as parents. Nicole Stack, speech pathologist here at Mokina Elementary School, all the work she's done with assistive technology to get students that otherwise may not be able to communicate a voice using adaptive devices, and training not only her students, but then those students' parents, so they can communicate outside of school and have a voice. And then finally, Stacy Kettler. Stacy Kettler has been, is just the most unbelievable rock star of a social worker you could hope for. She's been, she's mentored every new social worker in the district for a decade now. She is the fire department of social emotional crises here, like, you know, if, when a student is having trouble, you get Stacy on the radio, and she, you know, she comes down and works with a child that may be dysregulated, and you, you never see her sweat. She is the most calm, strong, collected person, just fantastic. Another example of four fine teachers that we have in our schools. Congratulations to all of our Galaxy Award winners. And then finally, I'm excited to see the winners of the voting for the Mokina Elementary School new expanded central playground, all that they're voting on all the satellite pieces for the new playground, although Mrs. Charlie has informed me that she wants to, you know, try and keep the spinny things to a minimum, so that after lunch, after lunch is not a good time to spin around a lot. So it'll be a lot of visits to nurses upset tummies. But we will be, we will be selecting the satellite pieces and getting those ordered for a fall installation. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cohen.
All right, good evening. My report was very long this five teachers who even the last week of school were still working towards making sure item for you tonight for the Zener Blazer Handwriting Program for grades one through I do have an informational item for you regarding the classroom libraries that our teachers have been busy selecting and curating titles for those, for their classrooms. So we look forward to bringing it to you next month for an action item. We have been really busy planning for summer tutoring and our summer school
you know, try and keep the spinny things to a minimum, so that after lunch, after lunch is not a good time to spin around a lot. So it'll be a lot of visits to nurses upset tummies. But we will be, we will be selecting those satellite pieces and getting those ordered for a fall installation. That concludes my report.
Five teachers who even the last week of school were still Yeah, yep, we've got it all. Everything's been set up, you know, for each of the different adoptions. I've included that in my report as well. But yes, for every adoption we've gone through, at least since I've been here, I can't speak to prior, we do have all of those materials out on display, from basically board meeting to board meeting. It's 30 days, but I do leave it out, you know, till the next board meeting, because that's just kind of an easy board meeting to board meeting. So, so yeah, feel free to come on in.
Next up is Ms. Seroni.
Get young athletes off the ground for a third year in a row. Thank goodness COVID is over, and we're hoping that we can expand our involvement with Special Olympics next year. Prior to COVID, we were talking about getting a unified partners team up and running at the junior high, and so I'd like for us to resurrect that and really work on it. We had, I'm a former CPS teacher, and I'm always floored at how good the eighth graders are that Dr. Rollanitis sends over. And yet again, what a great group of kids that came over, ran the centers for our little kid and buddies. They couldn't wait to see them. It was super cool. So I do think that we would be a great garden for our unified partners team here, children with and without disabilities participating together. I am really excited to be involved with the adoption of the EL curriculum. We have made sure as we've adopted new curriculum, that our special ed teachers are involved in the intense training and that they're implementing those curriculum with fidelity, making the modifications and accommodations that are needed for our students. So we have had them involved in the training this past week for our new EL curriculum. So I'm very excited about that. And thus far, knock on fake wood, our staffing looks really good in this We held our bid opening on four of our projects, two of them we did not have responsive bidder. We had the door, you'll see come in the fall, we'll reissue the door. We do have action items tonight for our other openings, our flooring project. So we had multiple bidders in our flooring project and our tuck pointing. We are also going to be replacing two doors, the door right outside the exit and on the opposite end of MES, those two doors will be replaced. And then we have our successful bidder on all of our painting projects for the summer. My other action item is approval of our tentative amended budget. And then we also have an information item on purchasing of a used bus and a grant process for an electric bus. We will have more information coming on that bus, and I had a brief conversation with our, one of our finance co-chairs about possibility of having a bigger, broader conversation about that as we continue down the path with the electronic bus and the purchase of the used bus. So we will see how that, all that information plays out. We have one of our bus companies who is writing a grant for his company for 200 buses, and we would be one of those in that grant process. It is a grant process, so it's, here is so much money toward the purchase of an electric bus, which still exceeds the cost of, of the purchase price for an electric bus. Could also use that grant to take an older bus and electrify the inside of that bus. So that's another option. So we'll have more conversations about what that looks like as we move into the summer. And that's my, my report. Any questions?
Sure. Okay, here are no questions, we'll move on to Mr. Henson.
I apologize, I do have a presentation, short, I promise. We did talk about this at the finance committee a little bit here. So I have the slideshow and then my board report. I'd like to talk about the Chromebook for your refresh plan. If you're at the finance committee, we did touch upon this. It's kind of important, realizing that the district, I mean, I hate to say COVID kind of threw a wrench in things, but I don't believe there was really a solid plan. You kind of just reacted to get devices in students' hands as best you could, right? So, so now I think it's time to have a plan in place. How this four-year cycle will work is every summer, we will purchase new Chromebooks for the first and fifth grades. They will stay with the students for four years. Every four years, we purchase a pool of Chromebooks for the kindergarten to use. These Chromebooks will stay in the kindergarten, in kindergarten rooms for four years. Once the four-year lifespan is up in a Chromebook, we sell it to a recycler, buy back, or even offer it to maybe the eighth grade students again. We try to purchase same-model Chromebook every year for a few years. This will be based off the Google's end-of-life policy, and we'll get to why that's important a little bit. For example, they'll know the new Lenovo 500E Gen 3, which the current junior high has the Gen 2s. The Google's end-of-life cycle is June 2030 for that one. This should get us into a rhythm where we are able to predict how many Chromebooks we purchase and sell every year. And you can tell that it's going to be about the same every year. If you look at the past five years of enrollment, it does not fluctuate a lot according to our Skyward here. You know, 2020 here and there, so it's not, we can, we can say pretty much it'll be about 350 every year, unless it's a kindergarten refresh year, then it'll be about 500. So one of the questions I did get was, why are we not letting eighth graders purchase Chromebooks for next year? After, after eighth grade, I'm talking with Cheryl K at Lincoln Way, they're giving all incoming freshmen a brand-new two-in-one tablet. If they're enrolled in summer school, they can pick it up as early as the second week of June, they'll have for summer school, right? And this will be a Lenovo 11 convertible tablet with a touchscreen stylus. It's, it's a Windows laptop, but it is like the Chromebook they will be used to, that they've been using in the junior high environment. And for this plan to work, quite frankly, we're going to need to use next year's and the following year's eighth grade Chromebooks, put them back in the service. If you're at the finance committee, you may have seen this, I apologize. I had a whole month, I worked on it, I tried to make it as easily understandable as possible. This is what I settled on and sell with. The most important thing here is the color coding. If you look at 23, 24 in green, you can see this is when we buy the first grade and fifth grade, and you follow the green each year as the kids move down for four years, and at the end of the four years, we sell it, you know, turn, turn over the Chromebooks. And this is true for each preceding year, so yellow, orange, purple, gray, pink, and blue. The white and the light sky blue, I guess, is the color you want to say, those are the current Chromebooks. And so the one year that we're, that I'm worried about is the 25, 20, 25, 26 year. That is the year that at June, Google is cutting off the support for that model of Chromebook that we currently have. But we should be good as long as we keep the eighth graders' Chromebooks and don't let them, don't sell it to them in two years. Chromebook lifespan, Google says Chromebooks should last five to eight years, normal expectations a little less, around five or six, a lot less available to use, such as in a, in a school environment. Google sends out updates about once a month, sometimes more, for the Chromebooks for that lifespan. Our current Chromebooks, the Lenovo 300Es and the 500Es, both second gen, have end-of-life Currently testing software, what software will not work on an end-of-life machine. So we saw that this year with IAR, IAR sends out updates saying, these models, you cannot anything else to them that I was not going to sell this year, but of that's normal. $20 to $30 for a good, a good working Chromebook, still supported. Sell back their Chromebooks for, that's depending on demand. Those were, they sit closer to the COVID years when there were supply chain issues, that's when they were getting a higher price for the Chromebooks they were selling. A lot of the companies for your old devices. We've seen that the, the four years seems to be a sweet spot where it works good for four years, and then maybe there's a little downturn after that. It's, I actually have a solid plan in place, right? It's, I actually have a solid plan in place, right? And that leads into much easier budget. We can plan out every year. We know every year that this is going to be part of the tech budget that we have. We start with this year, the incoming first graders will go through the cycle twice and by the time they get to Lincoln Way, it'll be, you know, something they're very used to. And it's easier to stay ahead of the end of three Chromebooks with max cases, the Google license and a three-year X and O damage warranty. If you buy a Lenovo, every year you buy a warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per, the warranty per device. Your old devices. We've seen that the, the four years seems to be a sweet spot where it works good for four years and then maybe there's a little downturn after that. It's, I actually have a solid plan in place, right? And that leads into much easier budget. We can plan out every year. We know every year that this is going to be part of the tech budget that we have. Start with this year, the incoming first graders will go through the cycle twice and by the time they get to Lincoln Way, it'll be, you know, something they're very used to. And it's easier to stay ahead of the end of start with this year, the incoming first graders will go through the cycle twice and by the time they get to Lincoln Way, it'll be, you know, something they're very used to. And it's easier to stay ahead of the end of start with this year, the incoming first graders will go through the cycle twice and by the time they get to Lincoln leaving the district to pay no more than $168,612. Today, they went well, thank you. Less than a half hour, it was in and out. Leaving the district to pay no more than $168,612. Today, they went well, thank you. Less than a half hour, it was in and out. We do plan a warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give, a warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per the warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per a warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per the warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give, a warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per the warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per the warranty, a warranty from Lenovo, they give a warranty from Lenovo, they give you two months. So a three-year warranty will give us three years, six months. And this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $53.50 per the warranty, a warranty and this quote is from YNS. YNS actually had a better price on that than the other vendors. $50
Questions?
I have one issue. He will cover three years and six months. So that'll leave us a couple of months. He will cover three years and six months. So that'll leave us a couple of months before the, either the eighth graders graduate or the end of school for the fourth graders who would both have the end-of-life. Four-year risk involved, it's more expensive to get a four-year warranty. The four-year warranty will cover four years and eight months. So that's quite frankly, a longer time. It would be, we could get some more money and buy back. Four-year warranty will cover four years and eight. Could get some more money and buy back from that if it still had a warranty, like even if it was two months. I don't think we will. If you look at it, the eighth graders, we're going to plan on selling those, that equipment anyways, even if it was two months. I don't think we will anyways. So it's all through Lenovo, through the manufacturers anyways. So they have like a and the screens are $100 a pop. So the screens are the tech to repair it and stuff like that. It is more beneficial to go with warranty. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think he did.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
The tech to repair it and stuff like that. It is more beneficial to go with warranty.
Graduation and some instructions there. Don't worry, we will be there. It's really easy and your job, we're doing it in pairs this time. So you'll stay at the meeting. I just want to, I have two more things. First of all, I, all the success that we had at IAR is really the success that goes all the way down to kindergarten and it's success that goes all the way down to kindergarten and it's all, it really is something that we get to reap the benefits of all the education that goes. And I tell Lincoln Way this all the time, that there's, it really is something that we get to reap the benefits of all the education that goes. And I tell Lincoln Way this all the time, that they're as good as they are because we're as good as we are. So it continues that way. I, you know, Craig's still here and I would say this whether he was here or not. But our teachers do, did a fantastic job this year of doing exactly what we said we were going to do and sticking to it. And one of the complaints to do and sticking to it. And one of the complaints that we've had is that sometimes the district doesn't always stick to something. So that's why we have a three-year goal and we want to stick to it and see it through. And, you know, it don't go away, we just build on top of them. So I think that's a really important thing to have out there, that this is, the staff really did it and, you know, Craig was instrumental, Stacy and Luke, Mr. Munch. And speaking of Luke, I just got a text from him. He's got a little baby girl that was born today. They don't have a name yet, but mom and baby are doing fine.
Have balanced classrooms as well as to give us information for instruction to start. Gives us a good kind of, just feel for what students already know so that we know where to start with instruction. We had 49 students, we had 49 students sign up and 43 were, showed up. So we were really, really happy with it. Went really fast and is doing a great job organizing it. So we're really excited for that. I cannot believe it's the end of the school year. I, I don't know how it, it's still, I'm kind of in denial that the end of the school year is here. Been a wonderful school. Believe it's the end of the school year. I, I don't know how it, it's still, I'm kind of in denial that the end of the school year is here. Been a wonderful school year. We really had a great year this year. They sounded amazing. So my hope is that that kind of experience, that performance gives them the opportunity to experience, you know, what that is like and want to continue a musical path as they get into MIS and the junior high and high school. So it was a lot of fun. We had a great time. So that's it.
Okay, Mr. McAtee.
Just a couple of quick things to mention. We had our final concerts, you know, last week and I put some links on my board report if anyone wants to listen to them. I want to congratulate Vicki Neider, our orchestra director. I don't know if you guys have ever tried to play a string instrument. I played saxophone for my entire life, basically. And trying to play a string instrument, it sounded like a dying cat. So it's really challenging and for those kids to come out sounding like they do, you know, kudos to her, kudos to the kids, probably their hard work. But Ms. Neider really does a fabulous job with the kids. We have our step up third grades coming over Friday night. Fourth graders are coming in. So if you want to see some crazy kids, we're going to have about 203rd and 4th graders in the gyms playing kickball and dodgeball and pickleball and basketball. It's, it's a lot of fun. Come on by and help us out if you want to. Great time for everybody. But thank you to PTA for putting that on. It's a, it's a wonderful event. And last thing I have, oh, two more things, I'm sorry. We have our kickball tournament, our annual kickball tournament on Tuesday. Home rooms play against each other. So if you are available anytime on Tuesday, we'll have kickball throughout the day. But the championships are at 1:15 on Tuesday afternoon. So if you want to come by, it really is a lot of fun. Kids get very competitive and they win a cup and it's kind of cool. So feel free to come on by if you can make it. And then the last thing I have is our student recognition celebration Friday morning, the last day of school at nine o'clock. We like to recognize all the clubs, all the organizations. We have some academic awards, we have some growth awards. We have all kinds of things that we just want to celebrate with our students before they leave us for the school year. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I have one comment. For the band, like the orchestra and the concerts, just a suggestion that if we could add the calendar to the other schools, like Friday report for the parents. I just think that maybe the younger kids would enjoy attending those events. And I just, you know, didn't know about it. Otherwise I would have brought my kids and maybe some other kids would have gone. So sharing that and getting it on, out to the parents of the other schools, I think, would be great. Yeah.
Okay, next up is Mrs. Briscoe with Lincoln Way Area Special Education.
Right, good evening again. First to note is the June, just a gentle reminder that the June bill is actually, actually the member district's first bill for the next school year. And that allows 843, the funds that they need for, like salaries for the summer stuff and bus leases. Right? I mean, so that's the only thing to note on finances. Well, so action items that we approved were comm ed efficiencies. We approved for the parking lot lights to be replaced for a whole one penny. So that was through their comm ed incentives for energy efficiency, which was pretty cool. But then here is where we get, you know, getting hit here pretty good. So the comm ed, again, we, we approved to replace all of the non LED lights at Pioneer Grove for the cost of $15,853.05. And then one more that we approved is for the elevator service to, not replace, but just to service them for $145 per month for three years. And that's it. Oh, no, one more, most important thing is that Mr. Romeo brought pictures in of what the self-kids, how they decorated our school, around our schools here. And the kids, he said, had a blast decorating and putting the flowers out there gardening. They want to do more. So if you see any of those areas, or and that's all I have.
Any questions for Mrs. Briscoe? Okay, we will then move on to action requests. Kathy, you ready? Got some new names we're going to hear. It's going to be a little different
I know.
than the past few years. So it's good. Okay, approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from April 19, 2023 regular session meeting and the April 26, 2023 special meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Goodbye, Ms. Briscoe. Any discussion?
I would move to separate the two meetings since we were not members at the first, the April 19 meeting. We've got to separate those. Well, I was present at the second meeting.
Correct. So I, I think the easiest thing is just to make two separate votes, right? And then we'll just have the three new members abstaining for the first vote since you guys are not technically members, I guess, at that point in time or official. Okay, so with that, I move to approve, or Lisa, do you want to amend your motion?
I amend my motion.
Okay, Anna, you second it still?
Second.
Okay, all righty. Any other discussion? Okay, please call a vote for the April 19.
I'm just calling for April 19.
Just the April 19 session. Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan. Are you abstaining? No?
Abstain, just say abstain.
Mrs. Oss.
I'm abstaining.
Mrs. Tunny.
Abstain.
And Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Can, do you want to approve the, amend your motion?
I move to approve April 26, 2023 special meeting as presented.
Second.
And elect, present, any discussion? Okay, let's call the vote on that one.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oss.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up, Mr. Andreessen had the honor of looking at the bills.
Question's asked, let's roll. I move to approve both the bills as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions, discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is personnel.
I move to approve personnel regulations, succeed 108 as presented, subject to the crystal background practice.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oss.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is consent agenda. Few items in there. I move to approve consent agenda items 6D, 1 through 6 as presented. Seconded by Ms. Briscoe. Any discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oss.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Next up is the adoption of the Zainer Blazer. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Handwriting. I want to say it again, so I don't want to have to make the motion. Fine, I'll do it. I move to adopt the Zainer Blazer as the 1 through 3 handwriting curriculum program starting in the 2023, 2024 school year as presented. That's an easy second on that one. Okay, any discussion? Yeah. All right, please call the vote.
Mrs. Oss.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny. Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the tentative amended budget this year, 2023.
I move to approve tentative amended budget applied from 3 as presented and direct the administration to display the tentative amended budget and give notice of where and when the tentative amended budget may be viewed and timed and placed of amended budget hereon. I further move to schedule the amended budget hearing for June 21st from 23 at 7:00 p.m. in the district's quarter.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Zolinski, any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oost.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is items for the June 21st agenda. Dr. Shaw has talked about some, I think Lincoln has some. We've kind of talked about that, anyone else want to offer up anything?
We'll be reviewing our strategic plan, just going over the progress from this year.
Okay, strategic plan as well. Follow-up, I don't think there's any follow-up items for the Good Mokina.
That's for our community, and like the Mokina Educational Fund, our district has a foundation, and I have handouts to give to each of the schools, that you can give to each of the kids in their folders, that shows how they can get financial assistance and the possibility for scholarships for next year, but financial assistance so they can participate in programs if they don't have the means to be. And then there's a golf outing that would raise money for that foundation, if you're interested in July, I'd have sign-ups for that as well.
Okay, anything else for the Good Mokina?
So on Saturday, July 15th, Lions Club is having their annual fire track to dance, it's their single biggest fundraiser throughout the year, and they also need to give it away to people in our community, some of it are our students that have vision and hearing problems, or they need food assistance throughout the year, those kind of things, so that's always a nice fundraiser to get back to them. That'll be coming up in about two minutes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I move that the Board of Education adjourn to closed session for purposes of personnel and emergency security procedures. Ooh, that's close, all right, I think so too. Lisa, was, any discussion? Okay, please call a vote.
Mrs. Zolinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oost.
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, thank you, have a good night, everyone. The board members will take about a 10-minute break, and then we will start at 9:10.